I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kate, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Gary Cunningham?
Here.
Patty Crone?
Here.
Doug Bryson?
Here.
Marie McFarland?
Here.
Sean Keare?
Here.
Miles Schlesinger?
Here.
And Steve Griffiths?
Here.
Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
No, there aren't.
All right. And we have a special order of business tonight. You will be introducing our new planning director. Is that correct, Richard?
That's right. This is our new planning director.
Welcome.
Good thing.
Lindsay Zamo comes to us from Gig Harbor. And obviously, our terms of office are overlapping a little bit. And she's been here, what, two weeks now?
Yeah, at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I've had the opportunity to meet most, if not all, of you through the meet and greet process and the interview process. I'm really excited to be here, see what we can do as a team, along with the city council and the other agencies throughout the city, to address implementing some of that hard work you guys did with Imagine Lincoln City and some other topics that we know that are right on the top of our heads to get through and finish. So, thank you. This is the first time working with a quasi judicial planning commission. We had a hearing examiner process up in Washington State, so I'm excited to learn that process with you guys as well.
Well, a very warm welcome to you and your family, and we look forward to working with you. Especially, I think, one of our first projects will be working on the new comprehensive plan and revising it. And Richard's a great mentor you're lucky to have him with you for a couple of months.
I'm very, I was very elated when I found out that I got to work with him for the next eight weeks.
Welcome, yeah. So, our next item on the agenda is the election of officers, our chair and vice chair. And I would like to get the process in motion by nominating Patty Crone as our next chair. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any further nominations?
I'd like to nominate Steve Griffiths.
Thank you, I'm declining. Although, I will say, it's been my privilege to serve you for two years as chair. I've enjoyed it a lot. I think we have worked well together. And I realize two years is my limit. I'd like to spend the last year of my four-year term as, full-time, as a planning commissioner. And I just wanted to thank you all for putting up with me as your chair. So, do we need a roll call vote, or how do we do this? Just by acclamation?
Well, you need a motion to appoint you, since it, actually, what you normally do is...
Richard?
What you normally do is, you see if you want, if anyone wants to make nominations. So, we have had one nomination. You would then close nominations.
Is there a motion to close the nomination?
I motion to close the nominations.
I motion to close the nominations.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right. All in favor of Patty Crone as our new chair?
Actually, no, you're just closing nominations. Just vote on the closure and then make a motion.
Oh, okay, let's vote on the closure. All in favor of closing the nomination process?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none.
And now, you just need a motion to appoint Patty.
Now, we need a motion to appoint Patty Crone as our new chair. Is there a motion?
I motion to appoint Patty Crone as our new chair.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. All in favor of appointing Patty Crone as our new chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Patty. And I think we changed chairs.
Now?
Now.
Well, why don't we just scoot chairs over?
I don't want to sit in the middle anymore.
I closer to the outside.
Agree. Okay.
There we go.
I don't get your phone?
Nope.
Okay. Wow. Well, that was really stunningly quick. Okay. I think, I immediately need a vice. Please. And I guess, open for nominations for vice chair. I'm going to nominate Sean.
I'd like to second.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got two seconds. Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, I think the pattern then is we have a motion to close the nominations.
I make motion to close the nominations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the nomination's closed. And now, a vote. All in favor of Sean being vice chair?
Aye.
I need a motion first. Ugh, damn. Okay. I need a motion to appoint Sean as vice chair.
I make motion to appoint Sean as our vice chair.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries. Congratulations, Sean.
Oh, thanks, Patty. Same to you.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. We have minutes in your packet from the December 18th meeting. I need, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I motion we approve the minutes for the December 18th meeting.
Second that.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the December 18th, 2018 minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. This is harder than it looks. All right, any final orders, resolutions, or written communications?
No.
No, okay. Public hearings and deliberations. It looks like we have a public hearing 7.1 COA 2018-7 to retain a comment period for new vacation rental land use applications. This is now, let I read this, yes? Thank you, Steve, I'm so glad you're here. Okay, it is now 6:08 PM, and the public hearing for file ZOA 2018-07 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in section 17.80.050 to remove the sunset provision for the 14-day notice and comment period concerning new land use applications for vacation rental dwelling. The amendment, if approved, will retain the opportunity for citizens to submit written comments prior to the planning director's decision on a new vacation rental dwelling application. This comment period was initially enacted in 2017 with a sunset provision at the end of 2018. The planning commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The city council may adopt the planning commission's recommendation, or may take other action. The commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? Okay, hearing none. All of this, huh? The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria, or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I'll summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If your testimony includes questions, please direct them to me as the chair. We won't interrupt testimony to answer questions. We may direct your questions to staff following your testimony. And if the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. I see no one in the audience, so it doesn't appear that there is anyone here to comment or to speak their name, or provide testimony. So, staff, would you please present your report?
Okay, so, Richard's, I guess, by that indication, asking me to do it. So, essentially, what you have is a very simple ordinance, which just deletes the sunset clause. There's a, current practice has been to provide more notice than is required for VRD applications. That practice had a sunset clause. The council initiated a change to the code under 1788, basically saying, let's keep, let's keep this additional notice provision. So, all we're really doing is striking the language which constitutes the sunset clause. So, that's the gist of it. In terms of the applicable statewide planning goals, we did provide notice to DLCD that we are proposing an amendment to the code under 197-610. I do not believe we sent out Measure 56 notice to all property owners in the city, because it's not a change to a zone, or permitted uses in a zone. It's just notice. So, I did attach findings to the proposed ordinance. The findings basically say, for the most part, the goals are not applicable, except, I'd say, the, you know, public participation goal. We're doing more notice than is required, so Goal 1 is there. And other goals really, again, don't really apply. So, we struggled whether or not to even do findings, but our code 1788 requires them, so I did do them. So, that's, that's the gist of it, Richard. Is there anything you want to add to that?
Nope, you nailed it.
All right, does the commission have any questions for Richard? Sean?
I got a question for you, Richard. Has this, has this extra 14 days been useful to everyone? Has it been a benefit to you as staff?
Well, we've got, we have gotten comments, not a lot of them. And some of the, most of the comments we got are what you would expect. People don't want to have, you know, the potential for trash parking noise, that kind of thing. There have been some that have gone beyond that and have been useful. In a, in a different form of usefulness, before, we got a pretty fair number of complaints that, why didn't you tell me before you approved this? And we don't get those anymore, because we do tell people. And it has the advantage for public participation in that, before, when we only sent out notice of approval, the only way for public participation at that point was an appeal, which costs money. Just responding to a notice that we've gotten, the application doesn't cost anything.
I would add that it probably cuts down on the number of frivolous appeals, because people have had the opportunity to participate without having to file an appeal.
So, without this, the, people don't have any notice until the approval is received? Is that...
No, actually, with, taking out the sunset clause, what the council did when they adopted the 14-day notice, advanced notice, notice of receipt of the application, they put a sunset on it, would try it for a year. Now, they're saying, take out the sunset clause, so it makes it permanent. So, the 14-day notice is permanent now, 14-day advanced notice.
But if we leave the sunset clause in, then it means that people don't get noticed unless, until it's already approved?
Right.
Okay. All right.
And it seems to me that some of the issues that have come up, by allowing people to comment beforehand, have resulted in conditions for new licensing and new approvals of the BRDs.
Right, yeah, on a couple of occasions, yes.
So, that's, to me, that's a positive benefit of striking the sunset clause.
Other comments, commissioners? Okay. Now's the time for public comment, but seeing no one in our audience, I'm going to assume no one is interested in commenting, and no representatives of public agencies are here. So, if there is no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I motion we close the public hearing and the record on ZOA...
2018.
2018-07.
I second that.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. What is the pleasure of the commission?
Don't feel like we need a lot of deliberation on this, since we're just repealing a sunset clause that was a test pattern, and it looks like it's a good thing to have in there, so I think we should just go ahead and vote.
I'll second that.
Okay, you want to put that in the form of a motion, maybe?
Yeah, I motion that we go ahead and have our vote on, on the passage of ZOA 182018-07 to repeal the sunset clause therein.
And I will second that motion.
I have a question. Is that the correct title for this ordinance, or is it 2019-01?
Well, the ZOA number is, is, the, yeah, the...
It's the proceeding.
Yeah, that's the, the name of the application. The ordinance number for purposes of the city council. Yeah, it's a 2019 number, but hopefully, it'll be 01.
That's not in the packet tonight, is it? Or is it?
I, I think I did. I tried to use the current ordinance, so...
Yeah, it's, it is listed as 2019-01.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then you could have moved to adopt that, that ordinance.
I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 2019...
They're recommending it to the council.
Recommend that to the city council, that they adopt ordinance number 2019-01, as written.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I think the motion passed. Thank you, Richard. Richard, thank you. Richards? Okay. All right, any old business?
No.
Any new business?
No.
Any commission training?
No.
Reports and comments?
Let's see. The city council held a hearing last night on the parking reduction for Taft and Ocean Lake, did not take action, but just did take testimony, had the staff report and testimony. And they left the record open for a week, and will deliberate at their next meeting. And the same thing happened with the four affordable housing ordinances, the tiny houses, four flats, parking reduction, and the tree protection. No action taken yet.
Question?
Did it seem, can I ask an opinion? Was it controversial with the public, or...
There wasn't very much public testimony. There was a lot of questions from the council on all of them. So, it was, it was an interesting, I mean, the meeting went a long time. Didn't get out till 10:30. There was a lot on the agenda, not just our ordinances, but it was, it was a long meeting, and it was a long hearing, or two long hearings, really.
Okay, any other reports?
No.
Comments?
I don't have any.
Okay.
I have a topic for further discussion, maybe?
Okay, for future agenda item?
It could be, I'm not sure where it really falls into place, but since we have passed the new ordinances for the signage in the city, I haven't seen any language on how that's going to be enforced, and I'm curious of how we're following up with that.
I can, I can tell you a little bit, it hasn't been adopted, of course. It's, the city council's holding a hearing, excuse me, hearing on the 28th to consider the sign ordinance.
Are they, are they in this proposal that we're doing? Do they have a plan for enforcement?
We have a, a city code enforcement officer. It's that person's job to enforce the sign ordinance. It's a matter of the city manager and police chief instructing what his priorities are, and I'm not sure if he has, if they have made that a particular priority. Staff does point out to him, or has in the past, illegal signage. And he acts on it pretty quickly, so...
Is that written in any way that, into the ordinance, that if they, somebody has a complaint, a citizen has a complaint on a sign ordinance, is there anything written into the signage ordinance that says they have, we have to respond as a city to that complaint within a period of time?
No, there's nothing like that.
But we could include something like that, if we chose to, or the city council chose to.
City council could, I believe, yes.
Can we make a recommendation?
Certainly.
Can we bring this up for topic now?
Can I ask a question? Can we make a recommendation, or have we passed beyond that point of making a recommendation?
I think, you know, as, as a commission, you can, you can make all kinds of recommendations. I think you have that, that ability.
They're going to take, the council's going to take it up on January 28th?
Right.
We have another meeting before then?
No.
No, so...
Yeah, the, the planning commission heard this, deliberated, made recommendations, passed, which were passed along to council. If council conducts the hearing on the 28th, and it was continued, and maybe continued again, you know, they can certainly hear what your recommendation was. Any of you can, as individuals, go to the meeting and make individual recommendations. It's really not before you anymore. So, while you could make a motion to add it to the agenda and discuss it, it's not really in the, it's kind of like reopening deliberations, which were closed at a point in the past. So, I, I don't think it would be appropriate to do that, but...
What if council...
...strictly prohibits you from talking about something, so...
Right, so, but the most straightforward method to get anything before the council at this point would be as an individual?
Well, that, that, yeah, if, unless there's, you know, consensus that y'all are interested in a certain thing, but, again, if this matter was put before, you had 60 days to make a recommendation, you made a recommendation. I guess, someone that voted in favor of the recommendation could make a motion to reconsider, but it's kind of too late for that. That's generally in the same meeting, or maybe sometimes the very next meeting. So, I don't think it, it would be a completely new motion.
I don't feel it should be us telling the enforcement people how to do their job, either. I don't think that's our job, to tell them that they need to do something in the way of enforcement.
That's not my intention with, with making this suggestion. It's just that I've noticed in the past that enforcement officers seem to be somewhat selective on what ordinances they will enforce versus other requirements. So, by suggesting to council that they respond to citi- citizenry complaints within a period of time, kind of covers that bridge, that, you know, it will be dealt with, and that's all I'm looking for. I mean, and it's just a recommendation to council, just to put it before their plate.
I can, I can address, part of this is that it's a violation, okay? There are classes of violation in our code, Class A through, I think we created, an E and an F, even though state law only goes down to D, and those are, have different fine levels. But the one thing that's clear in our code is we said, no citizen-initiated complaints. So, a citizen can't come in and sign a complaint and initiate a prosecution against their neighbor. It takes the city, city officer to make the decision to proceed on the violation. If it's a crime, then I have to endorse the, the citation. If it's a violation, the officer proceeds. Individuals, citizens can't come in and get into neighborhood disputes, well, your fence is too high, oh, your dog barks too much, and next thing you know, everybody's signing citations against each other. So, we don't do that. And so, in that sense, we, there's a certain level of independence in the code enforcement officer from having to respond to a complaint. They don't have to, you know, they'll take the complaint, but they might find that the case isn't, there's no case warranted, if it's, you know, not a violation. And the other aspect of this is that it's a budgetary issue. And when, when you have a code enforcement officer, and you only have so many hours in a day, the, he meets with the supervisor, and they prioritize enforcement. And so, generally, you don't see the kind of language we're talking about, where you would impose a number of days for someone to respond to a complaint. I can't say I haven't seen it, and, you know, I've been doing this for 30 years, but I, it's not frequent.
But a citizen can call and complain about something that's happening in their neighborhood or something?
Sure. When I say, file the complaint, I actually mean initiate the prosecution. A citizen can come in and say, I've noticed my neighbor violating this ordinance, here's some evidence. And then, the citizen is a, is a witness, but they're not the prosecutor. I mean, the, the decision to file the charge is up to the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
If it's a crime, it's kind of up to the officer and me.
Well, I'm not really speaking to zoning issues with fence heights, or disagreements with having chickens versus rabbits in the backyard. I'm speaking directly to the sign ordinance issue. And that's great, you know, if a citizen can make his or her comment to the planning commission, and the planning commission falls up, I would just like to see that done in a period of time, and that the person that is making the request, or considering it, get re-informed as to the decision that was made, whether to follow up with it or not. Sometimes, it just gets left hanging. And if it, if it's, if they still feel that the violation hasn't been satisfied to their degree, then they can say, then they can go before the council and say, okay, look, I issued this, I had this complaint about a signage that I felt wasn't proper, and can we have the, can the council take a look at it? So, I just, I'm just trying to get some communication and redundancy in here, because in the past, there's been so many violations, so prevalent, that nothing ever happens with it. And it kind of makes our job worthless, because here we are, we pass the ordinance, and we expect them to be followed through, but yet, they just seem to sit out there in space and never happen.
Actually, we recommend to the city council that they pass the ordinance. So, it's the city council that passes the ordinance. And what I think you were saying, those avenues exist currently. For example, if I notice a violation, I can complain to our city code enforcement violator. And if I don't see any action on that part, I would go to my city councillor and my ward and say, can you put, you know, what's going on here? I think this issue needs to be addressed.
Do you know who the code enforcement officer is? I used to know who it was.
I don't know them by name. I know we have them. So, but that's something that doesn't come before the planning commission. It goes to the code enforcement officer, and if the individual is not satisfied, to the city council.
The police chief is, in fact, the code enforcement officer's direct link. So, you can file a, a report with the police about it, and he is the person who tells the code enforcer what to do. My son had that job at one point in time, and he direct, he reported directly to the chief of...
And you are correct, that, that the city councillors actually don't have any authority, and so, it's really the individual councillors. They can engage in legislative decision-making in a meeting, you know, like you guys do, but they, they don't have any supervisory authority over code enforcement. So, the correct person to approach, if you're dissatisfied with code enforcement, would be the police chief. be the police chief, who's the direct supervisor.
So you just file a police report, basically?
It's not, it's not actually a police report, in the sense, it's more of a complaint. If you have a complaint about the conduct of an officer, you would make the complaint to the police chief. I mean, if you, in general, think that the city's not doing enough to enforce its land development regulations, or, you know, ordinances to require people to pick up after their dog, or whatever, you can always come and, and address your grievances to the elected officials under that five minutes you get at the every, every council meeting, public forum.
Sheriff, if I can add to that a little bit?
Please.
We have a complaint form that we, that we use. People do come in and complain about various things, including signs. I would imagine the police have a similar form, not a regular police, you know, it's not a police matter, like, you know, you would expect a police officer to go out and deal with it, but I imagine they have something for a civil complaint like we get, and to, we provide them to the code enforcement officer, and he takes whatever action is appropriate, or if, if, I mean, a lot of times, he just goes out and looks, doesn't see a problem. We get complaints about things that aren't illegal, and he'll take a look and say, "No, you know, that's okay." I've even told him not to do some enforcement on certain kinds of signs, because the Council hasn't said whether they're legal or illegal yet. So I think he's, he's standing by on what many people might think is a class of violations.
Let me run this a little farther down the road then, Richard. So if you get a citizen complaint about a signage, and I'm just sticking to the signage, do you, in turn, then look at it and review it, or do you, in turn, that over to the police chief?
If we get a complaint, chances are it's something that, you know, we see, we may see, and it'd be easy to check on, and then say, then turn it over to the code enforcement officer to.
Yeah, and I would.
Deal with the property owner or the business owner.
So you, if you went out and observed it after you got a complaint, then you would turn it, turn it over to the police chief?
Generally, I deal directly with the code enforcement officer.
Is there a code enforcement officer?
Yes, there is. Craig Grabenhurst.
So let me run it down the road a little bit farther, too. If our police force is out, and they notice a violation on a sign code, do they have the ability to initiate something and follow up with that?
I think, just like any citizen, they have that, that ability. I don't think they have code enforcement authority.
Any, any police officer is authorized to issue a violation under the Lincoln City Municipal Code. So there's a definition of enforcement officer in the code. It includes all police officers and the code enforcement officer, myself, the manager, Richard is not listed for some reason, because, probably because he didn't want to be.
Actually, I think, I think I am, because I even have a, I even have a badge.
Well, I'm pretty sure you're not. The BRD enforcement officer is.
You'll get a badge.
And you asked me not to put you on that list, but there is a catch-all that allows the city manager to actually name additional people as enforcement officers. Just back to the sign ordinance, just, you know, the Council did adopt, I know there's a pending sign ordinance, right? But the Council did adopt an ordinance in October, which was, which pulled out and put in a separate section of the code, not in the land use section, regulation of temporary signage. So it's not land use regulation, it's just kind of like nuisance abatement. So again, that was back in October, it's Chapter 934 of the code, and so there are provisions that are in place now that are enforceable. In fact, the Council increased the penalty for signs in the right of way to a Class A, which actually is the most, you know, $2,000 a day, as opposed to the Class B, which almost everything else in the code is a Class B, which is up to $1,000 a day. So there are some significant new provisions that are, they've been moved from the land use code to the, just Chapter 9, public safety, public health, and welfare type regulations. So it's, there is, there is an available course of action. Now, when we have a complaint that there's a sign, we might look at whether or not it's, if it's a temporary sign, we can enforce it under this ordinance. If it's a land use regulation, we have two choices. We can go to citation, or we can issue a notice of violation, which calls for voluntary compliance. They have to submit an assurance of compliance within 10 days of getting a notice of violation. And it's kind of like a way to avoid having to find someone and escalate things. And most people who get a notice of violation will respond with some kind of assurance of compliance within 10 days, and then we submit that to the judge, and if the judge says, "Okay," then, okay, they, they promise to fix it. It's kind of like a fix-it ticket in a way. But when we, when we, we don't have to do that anymore. We used to have to do that for violations of Title 17. Now we can go straight to issuing a citation.
Okay, and what I.
Well, thanks for the explanation. I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, because it sounded like what you're, part of your concern was that there was no feedback loop to the person complaining, so it really is in that person's court to go back to the compliance officer and check whether or not they were going to do anything about it, right?
I mean, in the last week, I had someone call me and say, "I, I had asked the DA to prosecute someone for this, and, and how come nothing happened?" Well, there is no appeal from a decision of the district attorney not to file charges. So you run into that kind of prosecutorial discretion a lot, and it's mostly based on budgets and resources, so.
Okay. And then the other remedy for someone making a complaint, if they don't see the code enforcement officer take care of it, is then to show up at City Council or talk to their ward council to bring it, to elevate it?
I think, I'll, I'll always recommend that. Now, your councilors are, you know, familiar with things, and so talking to your councilor about a problem is always a good idea to write to do that. Remember, councilors individually can't do anything. So if you want to address the full council, the five minutes you get at the beginning of a meeting, that's the way that they could actually respond. All, an individual counselor can do is pass along your, your concerns, but they can't do anything themselves.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. All right. So the last item on our agenda is future agenda items and next meeting, and our next meeting is Tuesday, February 5th, and next to that, it says Planning Commission Goals and Projects. So I think we traditionally, at the beginning of the year, talk about what we would like to accomplish.
Right.
In the next year. I would encourage my fellow Commissioners, if you have ideas, to get those to Kate, maybe prior to the meeting, prior to the agenda release, so that we can get those on the agenda, and we have some specifics to talk about. Does anybody have anything now that they'd like to suggest for Marie?
Yes, we talked last meeting, we talked about the potential of bringing Beat the Wave, the zoning overlay. Is that going to be on one of the earlier meetings, or is that longer, further out?
It should be on one of the earlier meetings. We need to get that through while our grant is still going on, so, yeah.
How long is that grant?
I'm not sure. The Beat the Wa, the formal Beat the Wave report won't come out until the summer, but the, you know, we've seen the draft materials, and I don't expect the final to change in any significant way. There is actually model language that the Department of Land Conservation and Development is already prepared, and easy enough to get the ball rolling with that, so it'd be fairly early.
Great. Yeah, I, too, would like to see that early. Yes, Miles?
Has Mr. Nicholson been replaced yet as a, in his position as emergency director?
What was the first part of what you said?
Mr. Nicholson.
Right.
He retired.
He retired. His replacement started on Monday, an extremely well-qualified gentleman who used to be actually the Director of the Office of Emergency Management for the State of Oregon.
Wow. How'd we get him?
He retired, and I think he was bored.
Our gain, perfect.
What is his, what is his name?
Yes.
Ken, Ken Murphy. Ken, Ken Murphy.
Ken Murphy.
Ken Murphy. All right.
I had, I'm sure a lot of people are not going to like to hear this one, but I'm going to say it out loud, anyway. I, I was wondering, what about, I don't even know if this is our business, but probably not. Maybe I'll just keep my mouth shut for a while.
How we're all mystified.
What a setup.
Thank you for sharing that.
When's the Jell-O ready?
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing nothing. I think we're adjourned.